All right, good evening. Good evening, everyone. This is the Town of Rutland Select Board Meeting for October 12th, 2021. We are here in Rutland Town Hall. It is 6:00 PM. We have Select Board Member Don Chaffee, Select Board Member Mary Ashcroft, and on the phone, Select Board Member Joe DiNardo. Sharon Russell was ill. She called me just before the meeting and can't make it. And we'll let you know if Select Board Member John Paul Fagnant joins. But we've got a quorum, so please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Welcome all. So just a reminder that the the bills and the warrants and the orders for payment of our employees and our town bills are here. Don has signed. I have signed. Joe, when you come in, if you could sign, please.
Okay.
A quorum will have that taken care of. First item is minutes of the Select Board Meeting for September 28th, 2021. Is there any motion to? Joe, was that you?
Yes, I moved to accept.
Okay. Is there a second?
If there's no one else, I will second it for discussion.
Okay, Don has seconded for discussion purposes.
And I would like to.
Do you have additions, corrections, or deletions?
I have discussion on the minutes. Yeah.
Okay.
With your permission, Madam Chair, may I take my mask off to read a statement?
Um, we're supposed to remain masked.
And I also took the, I took the REDIX, REDIX test this afternoon with a, with a rubber hose up my nose and I tested negative, so.
Okay.
But I'm asking permission for.
Okay, let me ask this. You're six feet away from everybody.
Yes, I am.
Is JP on?
He's not.
Okay. Is anybody here object if Don, for the purpose of making a statement or reading a statement, puts a mask, takes his mask off? Okay, go ahead, but please do put it on.
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Chair. I would like to object to the inclusion of any of the remarks offered by Mr. Fagnant at last Select Board Meeting in an illegal maneuver designed to avoid the transparency that's required of our longstanding policies in this town for operation of our board. And I'll explain the factual reasons for my objection. This is approximately two minutes, Madam Chair.
I just turned the air conditioning off so.
Thank you very much. First, there being no urgency for any of his actions, Mr. Fagnant clearly breached the rule of publishing any action item on an agenda required for prior consideration by our board, thereby short-circuiting the deliberative process that's clearly intended by the publishing and dissemination of an agenda and supporting documents prior to any meeting at which they would be discussed. Secondly, since his motion to suspend the formal agenda was allowed by you, Madam Chair, there was in fact no meeting at all, since the entire published purpose of the meeting was the published agenda, which was then no longer on the table. Thirdly, Madam Chair, you allowed Mr. Fagnant to utter clearly false, misleading, defamatory statements about a fellow board member intended to harm the reputation of that member. That action constitutes slander, and your duty as Chair at the very minimum is not to let that conduct take place at our meetings. Your prior knowledge of the posting in question and my specific reply to your concerns expressed in correspondence to you prior to this meeting should have made, been made available as a preface to you ruling Mr. Fagnant out of order. Further, by allowing these remarks to be put in or approved, you will be furthering an act of libel. Fourthly, Madam Chair, both actions of this board, censure and removal from committee, are clearly not legal nor appropriate. They are a clear violation of both my constitutional and my statutory rights of free speech and representative government under the laws of the United States and the state of Vermont. And they must be voided and expunged from the records of Rutland Town, whose citizens have been insulted and violated by such extreme and illegal actions. Our citizens certainly do deserve better, and at the very least, they deserve to be represented by the five members that they have duly elected to do so. In conclusion, Madam Chair, and in response to Mr. Fagnant's directive to me to quote, "Do whatever you have to do", I am informing you and this board that as of Friday, October 8th, 2021, I lodged three formal complaints. First, with the Vermont Secretary of State, second, with the Vermont Attorney General's Office, and third, with the Professional Conduct Board of the Vermont Bar Association. I want my rightful elected position restored and my equal rights with every other board member restored, as you have no legal authority to discriminate against me as a minority member of this board. That concludes my statement, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Don.
And I object, and I will vote no on the inclusion of the minutes.
All right, so do we have any other board member on? Okay, so we will table the minutes for discussion at our next board meeting, when we may have a quorum, you know, to address this. We do have a quorum, but obviously with a split vote, we're not going to be able to address the minutes tonight. Okay, we are at the point in our meeting when we ask if there are members of the public who would like to address us on matters which are not otherwise on the agenda. And we have two folks here from Simon's Avenue, so would you like to come up and take a seat and tell us what is on your mind? If you could identify yourself too, please, that would be good.
Thank you. I'm Lori Wood, and this is Andrew Wood, my husband. We live on Simon's Avenue. And we have concerns with two issues, the one being the waterfall. There is a lot of unsavory activity going on at the waterfall. We've gone down there before for various reasons to get rocks, take dogs for a walk, whatever. We found syringes down there. People dumped their trash down there. People dumped dead animals down there. And today, I found something that was kind of disturbing. It was the bust size of a, like a dummy or a mannequin. It wasn't a doll. Had no head, no arms, and no legs, and it had a stick through the vagina part of it, and it had breasts on it. So if you're having children go down there, that's definitely probably not something they're going to want to see. And the foot traffic and the car traffic has picked up down there. We could say a lot of it's probably at night because it's darker, but I think some of it's now spilling over into the daytime, too. So I'm concerned that if you do all the modifications that you're talking about without dealing with this other issue, it might just get all torn apart and not work the way you had hoped it would work. So we don't feel safe going down there sometimes. We didn't know who else to address or who else to talk to about it, so this is our first time coming and talking to people about it. The other issue is Simon's Avenue used to have a speed limit sign, and for some reason, we can't find it, so I don't know what happened to it. But people drive down and up Simon's Avenue sometimes 50 miles an hour, and we've got little children on that street. So we're looking to find out who to speak with to be part of resolutions for those two issues. So whoever deals with speed limit posting and whoever's in charge of the fall project, the waterfall project.
Okay. So I understand you have spoken to our Chief of Police.
Yes.
So that's a very good first start, and thank you for coming in to see us, too. And one of the thing, and we have heard similar complaints in the past, and part of doing a park and opening up is to make sure your concerns are addressed, and the visibility is greater so that hopefully some of that traffic, which is less than savory, will be driven out of there. Now, an answer to who else we have on the meeting, is Barbara Noyes pulling on?
Yes.
Okay. Barbara is Chair of our Planning Commission. And Barbara, to put you on the spot.
Could we do board first?
I'm only going to ask her since this citizens thing came up. Barbara, did you hear the concerns that the woods brought in?
Yes, I did. I did. And, yeah, we're still in the process of designing this park, and we still, we haven't gotten to the public input stage yet, but we will. And hopefully the woods will feel free to participate in that. I've taken notes tonight of your concerns. We've been trying to address these concerns, as Mary mentioned, with opening up the area, getting, you know, opening up some of the vegetation and the trees there to make everything more visible. And, and some other measures. So, yeah, there's lots of ideas for the park out there, but they may, when they run into reality, we might have to change some of those. And so that's why this process is ongoing. We've met with some historical people and some recreational people with interest in how to develop that area recreationally. But then the next step is, is some public meetings.
Okay. Thank you, Barbara. Before you leave, could you make sure that Bill Sweet, our Town Administrator, has contact information? And Bill, I'd ask you to get that to Barbara, so these folks can be included in any upcoming sessions.
And Bill is the one over in the corner.
He's the one in the corner.
Mr. Ashcroft, I do have a couple of questions.
Could you, excuse me, could, could you turn the microphone around? So, yes, thank you. We just, we'd like to make sure.
Are we shooting that way to get the audience?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just a couple of questions for, for you guys. I've had some ideas. I have gone down to the falls area over the last, well, I started last year and I've done a little bit this year to cut down the vegetation, because what the issue was is the people that were going back there, whatever they were doing, using drugs or whatnot, that was, there, there was a canopy there where people couldn't see. And so I went in, mowed a lot of it down, so you can now see almost to the falls. The other issue, I think, is that there is a street light there, but it barely illuminates that area.
Okay.
Um, what would be the possibility of getting a floodlight? Something that illuminates a little bit more than, than what it's doing right now.
Okay, so I will pass that on to Barbara.
Okay.
Okay, but also, I think on tonight's call, is Byron Hathaway there?
Yeah.
Okay, and we'll ask Byron if, what we can do about the speed limit sign that appears to be missing.
Yeah, because I spoke to a state trooper last week, and he told me that because there's not a, a speed limit sign in the state of Vermont, that the legal posted speed, if there's nothing there, is 50 miles an hour. And.
Okay, Byron, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Can we get a sign put back out there?
Certainly. I didn't, I was not aware that it had come up missing, and certainly I'll get the guys on that first thing in the morning, and we'll get a sign back up there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sure.
So this is Byron Hathaway, our Town Road Commissioner. And if you find it going missing again, please do let us and him know.
Absolutely.
Okay, or Andy, or Bill, you know, anybody here.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
I went down there this afternoon after your wife came in and walked down by the falls and whatnot. I didn't see a lot of garbage. I didn't see, of course, a lot of leaves on the ground. I didn't see any needles at this point in time.
Yeah.
I didn't see where someone was cutting and mowing in there.
That was me.
I mean, there's some, some garbage down there. I saw a couple empty packages of what needles were in. I didn't walk through the thick part of the woods there, because there was much of a trail in there, so.
Yeah.
But yeah, I understand it, because I see some people, I stop and talk to them, oh, this, we're just talking, or whatever.
Yeah.
Thanks for the heads up. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Good. Thank you, folks, and stay in touch, please.
Thank you for your time.
Don, go ahead.
No, first of all, pardon me, but you know, I'm, I've got two hearing aids, so I didn't catch your first names. Your.
Andrew.
Andrew.
Andrew and.
Lori Wood.
Dory.
Lori.
Lori. First of all, I want to thank you for being custodians of the general area as opposed to just your own property. More of that has got to be required in order for projects like this to be successful.
Yes.
We've talked preliminarily about the project in general and what's needed, and one of the things that is on the table is digital and/or visual surveillance of the area. And we have the ability, Madam Chair, I believe, that would certainly be appropriate. And we'll, and the board will discuss that to use ARPA funds, because we have ARPA funds available for such things. And we've talked about it at Northwood Park to provide both security and emergency notification and in case of some kind of a, of a pitfall, somebody falls in the falls, whatever. But I, I really believe that if we're going to develop this as a pocket park, that we need to provide the kind of surveillance that would be required of some kind of a visual camera. And then we have them at the Town Hall. We certainly can't afford to put a police officer there 24/7, but we can put a camera. And with the cutting of enough vegetation so that we have visual control of that area, I think that, well, that should be about the maximum that we can do.
It's something.
To make sure, well, to make sure that we have control of, control of the area, but I appreciate your concerns and thank you for bringing to our attention. We want to make it the safest and and the nicest little park anywhere around. You know, because it's a beautiful historic falls and.
Yes. Lived here all my life.
Hopefully more usage will encourage better participation and more scrutiny of bad activities.
Yeah.
I would hope. So thanks for coming in and.
Thank you for having us. Appreciate it.
Stay, stay on it, okay?
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
Reminder that the town isn't the only one who owns the property there, so.
Who owns it?
It's also the folks at Green Mountain Power.
Yeah.
And the state of Vermont owns some of it, too.
Yeah.
So we're all working together on this and. Okay, I guess that's, keep that in mind.
All right.
Don, I'll add that to, I don't think it is on our ARPA list. I'll add that on the ARPA list.
Good.
Thanks.
I thought I put it on there the very first time we talked about it, but.
I know we did surveillance generally, but I don't know.
It's on now, believe me.
Okay. Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks. Is there anyone else on our Zoom call who would like to address something that is not otherwise on this evening's agenda?
And Mary?
Yes.
Yeah, Chris Howland. Yes, Chris Howland. I got a couple of calls or contacts from neighbors or in the area up here, because I'm a JP, I guess, and they were concerned about leaf burning season and what the procedure was when there is putrid aroma from wet leaves or the like. Is that call the fire chief or call the fire warden or?
Well, Joe's on the call, so Joe DiNardo, which is it?
Either or, Mary. Any burning of any material, whether it's leaves, brush, or whatever, requires a burning permit. Any, you can't just go out in your backyard and burn your leaves. That is not acceptable. And every person that is issued a permit is explained that they can't create a nuisance and all of the do's and don'ts that go with it. So the, the biggest do's and don'ts are you can't create any hate and discontent or any nuisance for the neighbor, so. I don't know if, you know, folks are burning with or without a permit, without knowing specifics, but Chris Clark as the Fire Chief and Mike Carlson, Assistant Chief, under my direction, are allowed to issue permits in town, and they do so pretty regularly, and they're, they're pretty good about it, so. Usually when we have complaints, it's folks that are burning without a permit.
Well, you're allowed to have a, up to 39-inch diameter fire pit, according to the ordinance. Does that require a permit if you're going to burn in your, you know, little?
What, well, what ordinance are you referring to?
The burning ordinance that I read online when this happened the last time.
First thing is, the Town of Rutland has no burning ordinances. Any burning that's done in the Town of Rutland is done under the direction of the State Forest and Parks, whatever rules the states have. And it doesn't matter if you have a, and I don't know where you came up with a 39-inch thing, because I've never even seen that in my number of years of warding, but it doesn't matter. Anytime you have an open fire, even if it's a backyard cookout and you have a small fire, you're not allowed to create any hate and discontent. You, you can have a fire, you know, that, that's allowed, but the, the same rules apply to any open burning. You can't create any nuisance. So if someone is burning and they want to take the time to put leaves into a small three-foot circle and burn them and keep doing it, it's perfectly legal. It's stretching the parameters of the backyard burn pit that you can have at night for fires, so some of that stuff does slip under the radar, but it doesn't matter whether it's permitted or unpermitted, you still can't create any nuisance.
We do have an ordinance, actually, I think, Joe, because I've looked at it myself and noted the 39-inch diameter, because I've had the Boy Scouts up on my stone circle, so.
Well. It, it may be, but that's something that's never been shown to me. We did have ordinances on the books at one time, and those ordinances were all repealed at the request of a former town constable. And they thought that by repealing the ordinances, the burn barrels would go away. But that didn't work either. So I, I don't know where that's written. Somebody will have to show it to me. But anyway, it doesn't matter whether it's, it doesn't matter whether it's there or not. You can't create any hate and discontent if you have an open fire in town.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Chris, do you have any other questions?
No, they, that's exactly what the people didn't want to do. They felt that if they confronted the offender, that it would raise, it would bring up some discontent. So maybe, would it be all right if I asked Bill to just kind of send a letter out of? This ordinance, I did read the ordinance, whether it's appealed or, or not, I don't know, but it just. I mean, I could knock on the door and tell the person that the, that people in the neighborhood had complained, but the procedure is when I had a permit and it offended somebody, Chris's father came by and said, you got to put it out, but I mean, that was 20 years ago or whatever. I don't recall.
So you may want to direct it to the chief or the assistant chief. Or, or to Joe. I mean, you have now, but you might want to give details to Joe.
I'll pass it along, and they can contact if the order comes in their home. But, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Have we, anyone else on the call who would like to address the Select Board on a matter that is not otherwise on our agenda? Okay, then let's get on to the agenda. Byron Hathaway, Town Road Commissioner.
Evening, Mary.
Good evening, Byron.
I don't have a whole lot for you tonight, other than a question in regards to the little truck that we have now that's probably going to get replaced here, hopefully within the next two and a half to three weeks. That inspection sticker on that truck runs out in October. Do you want a new inspection sticker put on that truck? And if you do, we got to buy four new tires for it.
If we are going to sell it, and is that the plan?
I guess I made that assumption, that the truck would be either put out to bid with a minimum bid or something of that nature. Why? Do you want to keep the truck?
No, I was just thinking it's more saleable if it passes inspection.
Well, that was my concern, but it's going to cost over $1,000 to put tires on it. We just have to make sure.
The rest of the Select Board think?
What's it going to be worth if it's not inspectable, though?
I don't know.
Well, there you go.
I would say it would probably come somewhere in the vicinity of that thousand or more.
Absolutely. Any, any truck dealer I've ever talked to, the one thing they do is always put a decent set of tires on a truck, even if it's an old piece of junk. And it always, and it always makes it sell, just because it's got those good-looking tires on it.
Byron, you have a lot, a lot more experience with this than any of us do. What's your recommendation?
I would put tires on it and, and put an appropriate price on it to recover that.
Byron, if, Mary, just a question, if, if there's any chance that the town is going to need to run that truck after the inspection runs out, it's going to need to be inspected, so it's kind of a moot point. You know, Byron's hoping he'll get the truck before the sticker runs out, but you never know, so I think to just go ahead and put tires on it, get it inspected and because the way things are going, it might be later rather than sooner we see the new one.
Okay, we'll do.
Okay. Okay, good. Thanks.
Other than that, we're just cleaning up a few last-minute construction projects, and within another week or so, we'll be getting all our winter equipment ready.
Okay. Thank you for providing the, the month-to-month outline of what to expect as Road Commissioner, or your replace, what your replacement needs to expect every month, so I appreciate your work on that. That was helpful.
Well, certainly not complete, but it, it's a good start.
Yes, it is. Good. Okay, any other questions from Select Board Members for our Town Road Commissioner?
Yeah, Byron, I'd like to, because I don't, I didn't want you to have to stay for the total meeting, and it may come up under, under the Highway Committee Report or whatever, but I wanted to ask you just a, just a couple of pertinent questions regarding, well, the issue of your, the issue of your retirement. How, how long you been Road Commissioner now?
Since 2000.
20 years, 21 years?
Correct.
You, you've stood for election, what is it? It's a three-year term? Has it always been a three-year term?
It was a one-year term when I started, and it was changed, I believe, somewhere around '03 or '04.
Yeah. So let's put it this way, you've stood for election on quite a number of occasions in the Town of Rutland.
That's correct.
Did you ever have a doubt that the people made any incorrect choice when they elected you as Road Commissioner?
That's a loaded question, Don. No, I.
Oh, I mean, did you have?
I was happy serving the people in the town, and as, I always received a, a good, firm vote and was, was pleased with that.
Okay. That, that's, that's basically all I wanted to know. I mean, I, I think you can certainly be, you can certainly be happy and, and continue to be confident even in your retirement, that the people had that confidence in you. And if they didn't, they certainly wouldn't have reelected you, so.
That's correct.
Faith in the people and people's faith in you, that's the way good government works, so. Again, thanks, and that's all I wanted to know.
Okay. Joe, have you got anything for Byron?
Only just to thank you for taking care of that McKinley Avenue reseating project you did for Mrs. Baird.
Sure thing.
Good. Okay, thank you, Byron.
Yep, I'll be here most of the evening.
Okay, appreciate it. Barbara Noyes Pulling, Town Planning Commission Chair.
Right, here I am.
Yep.
Hello again.
Hi.
Hey, Barbara.
Um, so the, the Town Planning Commission is working on several things, trying to finalize a set of rules, of procedure that go beyond, you know, Robert's rules a little bit, or, or more specific for a group our size. And we're almost done with that. I think we got most of the ideas from VLCT. We need to revisit the Velco and Thomas subdivision. We don't necessarily need to do it. We'll be getting a new plat, I think. But the two parties, the, the Thomas family and Velco, need to work out. um, some labeling of the parcels of that, um, before the, uh, deal is consummated. Up on McKinley, Upper McKinley Avenue, we have a, a boundary line adjustment that we're working on. There's three parcels involved there. Uh, just some, you know, some parcels getting larger and one getting smaller. Um, so we just need a new survey map and there'll be a hearing on that October twenty-eighth. And, um, the planning commission is, continues its work on the ordinances. Uh, we're looking at perhaps, uh, maybe revising or, uh, taking a look at least at some of the current ordinances, maybe the flood hazard regs. Um, and the subdivision regulations, since it looks like those were written to accommodate a town with zoning. So we'd like to go in and clean that up and I guess maybe the open burning ordinance, I'm not sure. Um, and then for possible new ordinances, we have, um, you know, eight ideas. Uh, at the top of the list is, um, a topic that Bill Sweet gets the most complaints about, and that's a noise in town. So we'd like to look at possibility of doing a no, uh, noise ordinance, uh, something for helipads and airstrips and hot balloons. Maybe something for target practice, um, and other shooting, um, ranges and facilities. Maybe some fill limitations. Um, perhaps a generic building permit. And, um, maybe yard sales, something that determines when they become more commercial than private. And, and then that noise ordinance. So we started working with VLCT on some of this and they can help us to a certain extent. They can, uh, give us some general guidance and give us some models and, and some examples that other towns are using. Uh, but then, um, if it comes down to legal advice, uh, they, they will charge us. So right now we're looking for some direction from the select board. Uh, this is all, if, if we tackle all of these or even half of these, um, it's, it's going to take some of our time. It's going to take time and going to probably take some time of, uh, some sort of attorney so that we stay on, uh, the straight and narrow here. So is that okay? Do you have some priorities for the ones I mentioned? Um, and do you want me to add to the budget that the planning commission has? Um, add, add to the line item for legal advice, um, when we get to putting together the fiscal year twenty-two budget. Right now we have a thousand dollars for legal advice, uh, a year.
Okay. What's the preference of the select board?
Oh. Well, I would ask you, Madam Chair, if we have a, if we have a defined policy on use of the town attorney. I, I know you have been in contact with him on a number of issues and that, that have come up since I've been on the board. And that's generally been the policy or practice that it's the discretion of the chair uh, to contact the town attorney, but that we don't give, we don't give broad general authority for any other member just to call whenever they feel like calling. So I don't know if we have a policy or not, but it, it seems that Barbara's question is appropriate. Well, her, her concern about putting more money in the budget is certainly appropriate. How much? I don't, I don't know. But I think, but I really think that I really think that if she's going to contact an attorney on various issues, that it should go through the chair of the board.
I, and that has been the practice when a department head has wanted to look into a legal issue. Um, I'm usually contacted, Josh before me contacted, um, about being in touch with the town attorney. So that, that's, you're correct on that. Um, my suggestion would be because Barbara has also asked us to itemize which things we consider, we would consider as priorities for them to work on. Um, if you could maybe do a, a written list that the planning commission has identified, um, just what you've given us. And if you're able to, I mean, you may not be able to, but approximately, you know, legal fees for each review. I, I go back several years. I mean, I think I was asked as an attorney to review some municipal ordinances. So I, I know it can be pricey. Um, so if you give us an idea of what you think it might cost as we're building your budget and the rest of the town's budget, we'll have that in mind. And also what, what you think we should be paying attention to, and then we can give you feedback on which ordinances we would like you to work on.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Okay. If I check with Kevin Brown about, uh, you know, the price structure, the price.
Um, if, yeah, I mean, certainly hourly rate, number of hours for ordinance review.
VLCT, well, VLCT has the model policies, which will already have passed a lot of legal muster. But they have lawyers which will also review these for us because we are a, a member.
Okay. Did you hear that part, Barbara?
Yeah, yeah, I've been trying to, yes, I, I was hoping to get in their hourly rate, uh, before.
Okay. Why don't you start with the, the league first? Cause they're probably going to be less expensive.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. That was helpful. Okay. Any other issues from the planning commission?
No, from the regional planning commission, um, you asked for, um, some of the materials that I've been, um, compiling and putting together for the pocket park. And, um, I think those were sent out to you.
I think I received them, yes.
Yeah. So, um, if you had any questions about those, the survey is almost done. Um, I'd like the contour lines to be a little clearer. And, uh, they, they do clearly show that the town doesn't own that much land, uh, where we're talking about for the pocket park. Um, and you know, I also included the, uh, the fifteen suggestions that came from the recreational stakeholders. And, um, the, the living document with the historical stakeholders, uh, with the historical periods there and the sites. And that's an ongoing discussion I'm, I'm having. Um, we had one big meeting and now I'm just reaching out to individuals to follow up on, on certain things. Um, so any questions on that? And I, and I was wondering at what point would you like me to reach out to Johnson Energy to let them know, uh, what we're doing? And since it, it may impact them, uh, may impact their parking lot if people, uh, did it improperly?
Well, when we had our first site visit there, I think it was two years ago now. Um, I had some of the old sketches that were done and I went over to visit with Johnson Energy, but I'm sure they would appreciate an update. And I'd also like you to visit with, um, our Chief Dumas of the Police Department. So that he can give you the benefit of his ideas for security at the, at the site.
Okay.
Okay. Good. Joe, have you got anything for Barbara?
I do not.
Okay. Don, anything further?
No, no, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Barbara, and please thank the planning commission.
Okay, will do.
Okay. Uh, Carrie Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer.
Hi, Mary.
Hi, Carrie.
Um, so there isn't much to report from last meeting. Um, it was a quiet week last week. Um, I did send along, and this is honestly, I know it's a touchy subject. So basically I sent along um, uh, the contract again in hard copy for the digital records. Um, I'm not trying to be pushy at all. Um, I was just reminded by, um, the person in charge, uh, Mark Kirk, that that, um, discount for that program specifically will end in October, um, on the end of the month. Having said that, yep, having said that, I completely understand that we only have this to go on right now. So, um, when I spoke with him, I said, listen, you know, later on, um, if we decide to do something further, which might include his business, um, if he, if that business would also give us a discount then, when we're ready. Um, and his answer was perhaps, um, it all depends on uh, Vermont cities, um, and towns that want to get together, you know, to do it as a group rate, um. And he said he couldn't quote me on anything for the future. Um, I did ask him about a difference in the original price as to what he gave our quote. Um, and he said it's roughly a sixty-five hundred dollar discount. Um, just putting the facts out there. Now, I understand that it's best to get, compare other companies and, um, that's what I plan to do. Um, so I just wanted to include that just because it's going to run out and that's fine with me, but I just wanted that to be, you guys to be aware that there was a deadline for that.
Yeah. Um, I know the deadline is October thirty-first. We have one more meeting of the select board before then. So it's possible we could do something. The big question I had on this, Carrie, is, um, I know that the, I've worked a little with COTS when I've been doing some title work and I usually only go in at the first level, which is just to get the grantee grantor index.
Yep.
To find out what had occurred and that is free.
Um, yeah.
The next level would be downloading the actual deeds that were recorded and copying them. Who gets that revenue?
Um, we get that revenue. Um, I think we might have to give them like a portion of it. Um, I think in part of that contract, they did give some options on, um, what, what package we would want. Um, we could choose to have certain options available depending on the price we wanted to, 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 um, to pay. Um, and that includes like what levels we want people to come in and, at like what you're speaking of, like, um. So we do get a revenue of it. Um, that was one of his points he wanted to kind of put out there in the email, um, when I asked him, you know, what are, what are some benefits here that, you know, of, of your company? And again, there's nothing to compare it to. So I don't really feel like I have a strong argument, honestly, other than
Okay.
Um, this company right now in my eyes, um, there's several towns surrounding us using it and it would be nice to have them as a support system if ever needed, um, questioning, but that's really all I have at this point. I'd like to look into some other options.
Okay, good. So we will put this on the agenda for next meeting. Um, and just with the reminder that we're, this, this particular offer will expire, but we also have other, who's, who else is out there? I, I'm familiar with COTS, but there are others.
And, and you know, I know there's others. I had a list of them. Um, I can't, I can't seem to remember what other companies are out there. This one stands out because so many people use it. Um, but I will be including, you know, what's out there in, in my, um, research basically, because I'm interested. Um, knowing that there's certain things that we are looking for in, in companies, obviously priced, but you along with me, we're all, we want privacy, we want security. So those are some big things that I'll be looking for.
Okay.
Carrie, did you, uh, have you had conversations with the, uh, other, uh, towns in the area that, uh, contracted with COT?
Um, I have had conversations with them. Um, in particular, I'm, I'm supposed to be going to see Mendon, but when I was available, they were going through a townwide re, reappraisal. Am I saying that right? Um, so I was going to give them time before reaching out again, but apparently they really enjoy that system. Um, and it benefits everybody using it. Um, so it's, it's all in what I, I need to go see it. I need to see how it works. You know, I got to provide you with more information than what I have.
Right. What I was, uh, I wasn't really asking for the, the actual referral information, but
Yep.
if you could make some notes for yourself, for us, for the next meeting, uh, from some of those other towns, some specific comments that they may have about the efficacy and the cost of the cost benefits that you're talking about in terms of the services that we provide to third parties.
Sure.
Uh, and then of course the competitive bidding from other firms.
Exactly.
I know it's a tough call in, in two weeks, but we really should have some information as to what other firms are charging for the same services.
Sure. I can see what I can gather.
Yep. Thanks, Carrie.
Absolutely.
Anything else for Carrie Clark? If not, have a good rest of the evening, Carrie.
I'll try. I'll be on.
Okay, thank you. Ed Dumas, Town Police Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So first we have, uh, calls, calls for service. I counted at forty-seven currently. Uh, things are pretty much back to normal as opposed to earlier this year. First calls go.
So down, they're down compared with earlier this year.
Well, we're still pretty busy. But we've, uh, it's not all thefts at this point in time. Still quite a few, but uh, the other thing is, uh, have any, any questions on that? And we had a, not a select board meeting, we had a police commission meeting last week. And I don't know if you want me to bring that up now or.
Well, let's, um, we're down to select board members, one of whom is on the police commission. Um, the other is who, who's one of the constables. Um, I would prefer that we get minutes for that meeting. So everyone is up to speed.
Okay.
On the proposal, the idea, the police, um, committee considered the idea of having Ed step down as first constable and appointing someone who lives in town, who is recently retiring from another department as a, uh, the new first constable, the interim first constable. Um, in order to do some extra, uh, road speed enforcement. But I, I was hoping we'd have the minutes so that you could read about it, Don, so that Joe could read about it. And we were all, um, up to speed on that. So I think we should put that on next.
I'll just add.
There is a definite person in mind.
Yes.
At this point, yes.
And, uh, the other thing is, uh, part of the, when I was on the Child First Advocacy Center, I was assigned there as, uh, SOU. The Special Investigative Unit for, for the crimes against children and families. And, uh, what I do, anything extra I did, uh, for the town, I would take and, uh, charge the, the first constable budget for that, like slight more meetings or things I had to do in town, dog complaints, whatever. And now that I'm full-time working in the town, there's really no need for, other than the fact I can serve civil paperwork for town residents and I think that, uh, that can be better served by somebody else doing that, to be honest with you. And plus it gives the town another body to, to, uh,
When is your term up, Ed?
Uh, we just got elected last year. So is it three years?
I don't know. I'm just going to pull out my town report.
It's two years, right?
Is it? Okay.
Okay.
I think it's two years, yes.
Okay.
Yep. See ya.
All right. So, well, this is not something we're, we should decide tonight, I don't think. Um, and let's bring everybody up to speed and let's see if we can get those
Okay.
minutes done. So people have the benefit of what the police committee talked about.
Okay.
Okay.
I think that's all I have at this point in time.
Okay.
Would the.
Questions, go ahead, Don.
Would the, uh, would that discussion be in executive session since we're talking about personnel or?
Um, we did not go into executive session in the police.
The future one.
I think that it's probably going to be a split. It's going to be talking about the, whether we accept the resignation as first constable and how we fill it. And then if there is someone specific in mind, that part may be in executive session. I don't know.
No, I was just.
Haven't heard any opinions yet.
I was just thinking in, in general about this, this whole succession argument that from a town's perspective, that from a towns perspective, that we oughta be, we really should be totally transparent and fair with our townspeople, and giving everyone a chance to apply for such a position, even though we might have one person in mind. Um, as opposed to letting the term run out and just letting somebody run for it. But in this case, somebody would be going in as a, as a two-year incumbent if we appoint somebody. We would appoint him for the balance of his term.
Right, it would be just, just over a year, but I see your point, yes.
So that's.
The other point that, at the, as I think back at, when we had the, uh, uh, town meeting, there was always, uh, one or two people that asked me, well, why are you the police chief and the first constable? And why is there money in this and money there and you get both that money? And that was always a bone of contention I got from.
No, I think it makes entirely good sense.
Yeah.
For what you're doing, because before you had that split.
Correct.
Agents in position, but now that you're a full-time Rutland Town Police Chief, paid fully by our budget.
Right.
There's really no purpose in you, no, there's no useful purpose in you being first constable. We could have another officer. Makes sense. And I certainly like the idea of using that officer for, for, uh, speed control.
Exactly.
And so do a whole mess of people in the town.
Exactly.
Well, we heard two more tonight. Yeah. Uh, Joe, any questions of our police chief?
Uh, I don't.
Okay.
All right.
I think that's it. Thank you, Ed.
Yep. Thanks, Ed.
Okay, do we have Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief on? And Chris had let me know in advance that he was, um, uh, um, up north and he may not get back in time, so it appears that he has not. So he sent me an email earlier today. So three things. The first is calls have gone up in the last two weeks. Uh, this is for the fire department. We have had, we've had nine calls. That's number one. Number two, there is a new member to be approved for the fire department. Uh, he will be a junior member. He will be eighteen in April. His name is Braden Clark. The background check is done, been done by the police department, Ed. Mr. Rowe. Thank you. Could you let Ed?
I'm sorry.
That's, um, you've done the background check on Braden Clark?
Yes.
And he's passed?
Yes.
Okay, so, um.
Did his father approve him?
I don't know what his father thought.
Okay, so is there any motion?
I would like to make a motion that we approve the, uh, uh, nomination of, uh, Braden Clark, as a junior fireman in the Rutland Town Fire Department.
Okay, is there a second? Motion's made. I, I got that. Thank you, Joe.
Okay.
Yeah, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Nope. So I'm gonna sign now and Don's here. He can sign and Joe will leave this here for you to sign as well. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. So that was item number two from the fire chief. Item number three. We had a gentleman come look at our truck that is for sale. Our asking price has been ten thousand dollars. He offered us seventy-five hundred. He did write the town a check. I told him it would have to be approved by the board. If it's not, we can send the check back. Uh, Chris advises, this is the only person that has come to look at the truck and the only offer we have. The new truck should be here in late December. So what's your pleasure with this, uh, seventy-five hundred dollar offer?
Move to approve.
Yeah.
Motion's been made to approve, Joe?
Yeah, I was gonna say I would, uh, I'll second that on the advice of the, uh, fire chief to accept that amount of money.
Okay, motions made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of selling the fire truck for seventy-five hundred dollars, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Okay, um, so bill is sale and all of that's gonna be all, all ready to go. Good, thank you. So that is the Town Fire Chief's report. Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director.
Good evening all. How are you?
Hi, Mike.
We're good.
Um, first off, we did not get our grant.
Yeah, I saw that.
Vorac, um.
Which one?
The one that, uh, we applied for back over the summer. Uh, we were looking, Vorac had five million dollars in grants that they were asking municipalities to compete for. They had a total of a hundred and four people apply with a total of twenty million dollars requested. We were not, um, we were not selected. Um, so with that, I'd like to schedule a committee meeting for rec to talk about budget, and some other stuff moving forward. So I know Joe's on the line. Um, and I guess I would just get Sharon's permission, but I was thinking before our next meeting at five.
Okay.
If possible.
Okay, so, uh, you should probably email to the two of them and see if that works.
And then I'll add Bill into that and then we can, uh, we can see what happens.
Okay, well, thank you for applying. You never know until you try.
I mean, yeah, you're right. And there are a lot of people that are really hoping that we can move forward with a lot of the improvements. They got really excited and jazzed and that participated in.
Good.
Uh, the writing of the grant, so I wasn't alone at all. There was a lot of community members lending support. So hopefully we can keep the wheels moving. Um, Halloween party is set, ready to go. Um, that's on the twenty-ninth for town residents, from five to six-thirty, right out back of school. We're gonna call it the trick-or-treat on the trail. The seventh grade is currently working on their activities that the kids will go through. We have it, plenty of lighting and festive, make it festive as they walk through. I think it'll be really cool. Um, and so that's gonna go on the twenty-ninth. I've already talked to Ed about having an officer there in front, just to kinda help out, cuz it will be dark by the twenty-ninth at five o'clock. So, yeah, we'll make sure that that gets taken care of. There's plenty of candy involved. And yes, Mary, I will make sure the select board has some extra candy in your bag when you, after the meeting. Um, we're on our last two weeks of mowing. We hope to be all done for the season, uh, the twenty-second. We're hoping everything will be done after that. All the water will be shut off in all of our parks, uh, and winterized. Um, the fields have been, the baseball fields themselves, the infields have been rototilled, dragged, and are in the process of being finalized so that in spring, we just plop the bases down and we're good to go. So I'm very happy with that. Uh, addressing, um, Mrs. Coolies, we did, we are attacking the vines, uh, on the back. We had done that, Chuck had done that. It hadn't been done in years last year and he did it last year phenomenal. And then they came back slowly. And so we are in the process of finishing that before we go too.
Okay.
So that'll be taken care of.
Good, thanks.
Um, signs for the park are ordered. As far as no parking after dusk, I ran it by Bill. Bill seemed good with that. Uh, the, the next question is, where do you want them placed inside Northwood Park? Um, I was thinking one at the main gate. I ordered four signs, one at the main gate, one at the basketball court, area, parking area, and then I guess two down in the back, way down in the back, where we have our doggy pot station.
Um, what about up by the? Uh.
And then I can put one by the gate going up to the other part. Yeah, I can do that there. So that's where I'll place those signs when they come in.
Okay.
Um, soccer was over this week. We just had our last K-two soccer program with the middle school kids. It was fantastic. Kids had a great time. And then the only other, I have two other things. One, um, are you okay with locking the gate at Dewey for the season, starting ASAP? There's no need for the gate to be unlocked at Dewey. They can park, in our little parking area that we fixed and they can walk in rather than leaving the gate open. Neighbors have a little bit of concern now that it's getting darker, that people are, even though it's right on the road. Um, I don't think there's a big need for people to go. If they wanna go, they can literally park and walk the two hundred feet to get to the basketball court, rather than having to drive in.
How much parking is?
There's enough for, you, you can fit like ten cars.
Okay.
So that's not an issue. And not, there are no.
Last year.
I don't know if we really had. We did lock it like towards the, the very end, um, like in November. But there's really no reason for people that, you know, if they wanna go in, they can walk in. I don't think we need to have it unlocked, but I, that's up to you.
I, I have no feeling either way. Um, Don?
Uh, seems prudent to lock it.
Okay, Joe, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, the season's over and there's parking if people wanna walk, so it's a good situation.
Okay.
And then that leads me to my next last question about the gate at Northwood. And Byron, you might be able to help me out. Byron, when do we normally not lock the gate anymore?
Uh, I'm just trying to. We're just starting sometime around the first of November.
November.
So as of November first, we can be keeping the gate open, um, at Northwood rather than locking it every night. So as long as you're okay with that, right? In my speaking right, we keep it open from November on.
It's open cuz sometimes it gets plowed in and, and gets frozen, but, you know. That, that's why it's always been left open, so, so the plow, plow guys can get in and out when they need to for salt.
Okay.
So you're okay with that?
I'm fine with that, Don?
You guys okay with that? Joe, you okay with that?
Yep, yep, that's whatever we normally do.
Okay, so November first, we'll.
And the sign should be up by then.
Yeah, I'll hopefully have the signs this week, next week.
Okay.
And yeah, I won't do that until we at least have the signs.
Okay, good.
Um, other than that, I don't have anything else unless anybody has some questions for me. Feel free.
The, are those, are any of those grants gonna be reoccurring or is that a dead issue?
I don't think it's a dead issue. Um, but what I don't want is, time to go by and miss opportunities to make improvements to the park, hoping that we get a grant. You know, I'll always look for grants. There's always, there's always something we can fix, work on, what have you.
Well, we have ARPA funds and.
We have mu- we, we, we have plenty of money right now that we can afford to do the projects that I'd like. It's just a matter of conversation and working through it. Um, but yes, as far as grants, I, 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 I wasn't sure how long this grant would keep rolling over. Um, I know it was year two maybe or year three of it. Um, but like I said, there were a ton of people.
Would you take a look at our, ARPA chart and make sure that all of your stuff was on it? I think we, I'm not sure we were that careful because you were applying for the other grant, but as long as we know you're not gonna get that, let's just make sure that, so when we go to prioritize, we'll consider your things on that too.
That would be great.
Okay, I think Bill has the chart. Yeah.
If you could just share it with me, Bill, that would be awesome. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thanks.
Questions, Joe?
Yes, I do. Um, Mike, the, uh, trail system in Northwood, um, does that prohibit horseback riding in the park system?
It does.
Okay, um, have you given any thought to maybe designating? Or maybe at some point expanding that to specific trails that folks could ride in the park?
You know, I never, I never have. I know that on the front sign it says no, no horseback riding within the park. Um.
Okay.
I, I'm not opposed to that at all. I just, that has to be clearly thought out and marked up. Because I, like I said before, you know, if you have a, a lady walking a dog and she comes around the corner, and there are many corners on that trail, and there is a horse standing there, that's not necessarily gonna be a good thing. It might not, but I, I don't, I don't want to have them, you know, get in the way of each other. Um, also, we'd have to really talk about cleanup after a horse. You know, just because they're on a trail doesn't mean they can just let it fly, no pun intended, and not stop and scoop it up. So there are a lot of issues.
Yeah, it was, I was approached about this, about some folks, uh, more and more people, um, have horses. And I didn't know if there was something, you know, and I'm thinking long range here. I'm not thinking, you know, next spring. But it's, it's just something that there would be specific designated areas in that park where it would be allowed. And, you know, or, or pass-through area from property to property and stuff, just, just to make it convenient for folks. And obviously, um, it just require, uh, bigger plastic bag.
Yeah, yeah. I, I'm all for it. I'm not, I'm not against people on horseback at all. I just wanna make it safe for everybody that's walking the park, um, and that we don't run into any situations where the town would be liable. Because we had a situation within the park that we could have avoided. So yes, Joe, your, the answer is yes. I'm fully, uh, on board with trying to make something work if it's feasible, to, uh, anything that people recreate and get outside. So, yeah.
Okay.
Thank, thank you.
No problem.
All right, thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Uh, Bill Sweet, Town Administrative Assistant.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, Bill.
Hi. Uh, all right, so a few, a few things, um. We, uh, did get back, Carrie and I, uh, had a online call today with Patricia from the state of Vermont, from, uh, DCF.
Ah, yes.
About the agreement between the town and them for a payment. Uh, they sent us back a revised copy, uh, that adds Mary, uh, as the primary signer on there. Carrie is still on it, uh, because the town treasurer is a vendor already approved with the state. So the payment process does not need to go through any additional verification. Uh, so it makes it a, a much more streamlined process to leave her on that rather than taking her off. Uh, so send it back to us. The rest of it remains unchanged, just added her. Um, it, it still needs to go through their verification process because it's changed. It has to go through their approval process again, so they started that today. Uh, but they wanna let us know if we had any, any comments or, or questions on that draft.
I, I still don't think they've got it quite right. It's not the town of Rutland Treasurer that they're contracting with. It's the town of Rutland. And maybe the treasurer will act as our authorized agent for the purposes of the pre-approval, but.
Right, so that's, that's what candidate did make clear to her is that, that the select board needs to be the one that enters into the agreement.
And remember, this is a forty-page document so that we get repaid the three thousand dollars that it cost us for our police services down at the, for calls down at the Holiday Inn.
Yep.
During the homeless housing issue. So it's one of those, you know, one, one of my conversations with Kevin Brown, his question was, do you want me to review that contract? I don't know whether it's cost-effective. So I'm open for suggestions. What do we do with this?
I don't have a clue.
There you go.
The, the, you do realize, Mary, that the forty pages is to discourage us from pursuing this, right?
Oh, it did occur to me, yes, indeed.
Yes, and, and the controversial language adds to the dilemma. Um, I don't think we should com- uh, I don't think we should walk away from it, but I don't know. Like you say, if, if, if it takes Kevin, well, I don't know how many hours to read it and at a hundred and something dollars an hour, we might break even.
Than that. Um, so how about this? I mean, I'm, I'm just doing this off the top of my head. How about if I get the document to him and say, tell us whether it's worth your time and, and our money to review this. Don't spend more than an hour looking it over first time and then call me. How's that?
Perfect.
That sounds reasonable.
All right. And I think you've got the, you've got the electronic version?
I do, yes.
Okay, so. All right, I'll give Kevin a call. Tell him he's limited to one hour to tell us whether it's worth doing.
Okay. Do you want me to forward it to him?
Uh, yeah, but to you tomorrow.
Do you forward him to him or to you?
Yeah, you'll, you'll crash my laptop if you send it to me.
I hope he doesn't send you an answer saying, I think it would be valuable if you dot, 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 dot.
Um, I will probably have him call me after he's done a quick and dirty of it and just see. I mean, that's the basic question, is it worth it? Okay, what else do you have for us?
Uh, we are, uh, the, all of the generators in town will be serviced. Their annual service will be done tomorrow. Uh, Brookfield's coming down. They're gonna cover, they're gonna do all of them and take care of, so they'll all be, all be ready to go. Uh, Tyler Richardson was on earlier, but he had to jump off.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, he wanted to follow up on their, uh, request. Uh, he has con- confirmed that the sump pump pumps into the yard and does not sup- pump into any drain or. Uh, he has con- confirmed that the sump pump pumps into the yard and does not pump into any drain around.
Okay, and our concern had been that it was going into a sanitary sewer drain, which was not authorized.
We wanted to verify that it wasn't doing that. So, and he has verified that.
So you'll recall this is the, um, Cedar, used to be Riddick property. They wish to. Extend their parking lot or redo their parking lot, some of which happens to be on an old town road not being used. We wanted to make sure we knew what the drainage situation was there. Um, is there any motion with regard to their request?
Joe, what do you think?
Well, if they have met all of our, uh, requirements and we're happy, uh, I, I think that probably we should approve their requests. I, I would make that a motion.
Motion's made. Don?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to re- approve the request by Cedar, I think it is now.
Yes.
For use of the town's road as part of their parking lot with the understanding that none of the runoff goes into any. Starb, uh, sanitary sewer basin and that runoff is just onto the parking or the.
The, their lawn.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. None opposed, so the motion carries. Okay. What else?
Um, I would ask that if, if I can get, uh, permission to have. The, uh, gutters at the back of the building repaired, both downspouts, the bottom third to half have fallen off. Um, so I have a company, uh, Vermont Durable Products. They quoted us a thousand dollars to come. They're gonna go through left to right, top to bottom and repair any seams, clean them out and install new, actually larger downspouts. Because they're not actually really big enough for the size of the roof. Um, so I want to see if I can get that approved. Uh, so we can get the work done on them.
What's the company?
Vermont Durable Products.
Vermont Durable Products. As a former member of the building committee, I would make the motion that we authorize.
Okay.
Vermont Durable Products to come for a thousand dollars.
Yep.
Okay, motion's made. Joe?
Seconded. Seconded.
Made and seconded any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Okay. What else, Bill?
Uh, the only other thing I had was the two allocation requests.
Okay. So we have in our packet, the. Two sewer, uh, sewer allocation application. And a.
Our very first water.
Request. That's what you were referring to, right?
Yes, our very first water connection request.
For, both for Ranberry Associates. These are on, at one thirty-two Ranberry Road. Um, and this is for basically the reason we put the fire, the, the water line down there was the businesses would have. Potable water to hook up to, and it looks like they're taking advantage of that. Um, so the water connection request is for seventy-five gallons per day. Um, the sewer is for, to serve an office facility, distribution site and service station that has one bathroom hookup. Not open to the public. And they are seeking seventy-five gallons. So, what's your pleasure?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the water connection and sewer allocation application from Ranberry Associates. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. And this is internal. We don't need to sign anything.
No, it's, I'll take, I'll take the rest of it. Yep.
Okay, very good. Um. So. Anything else from?
Nothing else from me.
Okay, we had the COTS information and that's third. We have the highway information Byron gave us. We have the, um. Succession planning that we've got some advice from counsel, but that's confidential attorney information. I want to make sure. Chance to review it. Um, let's see, what else? Under.
I have a question, Mary.
Sure.
It just kind of popped to my mind here. We have a contract here that we spoke with Carrie about previously. Uh, that digitization of records. Will provide for. A lot of separation. And. Lack of personal contact. In the office, will it not?
If attorneys use it, and, and many people do that way, yes.
Anyone that uses it.
Yes.
Will therefore not have to come into the office. And be in contact with or expose any of our personnel to any, uh, uh, any disease or illness.
And it directly addresses the issue that we had earlier during the height of the pandemic. When people had to make appointments and come in here for limited periods of time and just a few at a time. So, yes.
So. With that criteria, I, I would think it would very easily qualify for ARPA funds.
I think it does.
It's, I think.
It's actually one of the, one of the things.
You put it on the list already?
It's on the list, yeah, but that's, that's, that's one of the things that is specifically listed as.
Yeah.
Able to be done, yeah.
Good.
In fact, there was some brief discussion of it, the League of Cities and Towns Annual Fair. I think somebody mentioned.
Yes.
Digitization of land records. So you're right, Don, it is.
Mary, if, if you, if you remember, um, when this whole pandemic thing is, and then we talked about this. There was one example of somebody traveling two hours or an hour and a half to Rutland Town to spend fifteen minutes in the, uh. Vault and then going home. So, um, one of the things that's come out of this pandemic, this remote access to. Everything is that we would be doing such a big benefit to folks by doing this. Um, and I think the only thing right now that stands between the board saying, yes, let's go ahead with it, is. To satisfy our purchasing policy. We should have some, either put it out to bid formally. And, and get some comparative stuff for Carrie to work with and the board to work with and, and move forward to this. Um, you know, this is like. Twenty-first century, um, stuff now, and, and everybody expects it, that you should be able to sit down and access stuff. And like you said, as you get further into the records, there are fees charged and, and that. Uh, setup is already there. Um, excuse me, a number of towns are already doing this, and I think that, you know, it, it's. I think the security is there and everything's there, and I, and I think it's time that we just move forward with it.
Well, I, I don't, I don't disagree. I mean, this has been, let me tell you the area, the towns in Rutland County that already have COTS. Uh, Brandon, Chittenden Town, Clarendon, Killington, Mendon, Mount Holly, Pollet, Pittsford, Poltony, Rutland City. Wallingford and West Rutland. Yeah, so this is not a.
It's easier to say who doesn't have it around here.
And one of the reasons, one of the reasons, Joe, that I asked Carrie to take some notes. On some performance aspects with the towns in, involved that Mary just mentioned. Is that when we receive that information, if it's positive and, um. If it's positive, then we may very well be able to just make a motion to include COT as a preferred vendor. And, uh, get on with the show.
There is another vendor, and I do want Carrie to get that, that, that I've seen. So I do want that information. But I, I'm very much in favor of the digitalization of land records. It just makes sense.
It's not going to get less expensive.
No, it's not.
Yeah. And one of the things that I want to be, you know, that we should be very careful of, um. Positive feedback to me and happiness with the services is much more important. Than what the actual cost is. Um.
Absolutely.
You know, you, you get what you pay for in this world and, and if, if COTS is a little more expensive and somebody comes in. Less expensive, I don't think that that should be the total, um, determining factor. It's, it's gotta be, you know, customer. Satisfaction is ranks, to me ranks much higher, you know, than, than the dollars. I mean, I don't, I don't want to pay. It's substantially more, but, but you get what I'm going with this. We want to make sure we get, you know, the best that there is because, um. Well, there's things in the healthcare that hu- hospitals and facilities have switched to certain, um, management. Computerized management systems and they have found that the low bidders don't always work the best.
Yeah, um, I do know that Pittsford. I'm pretty sure it was Pittsford, had two different vendors and COTS was one and I forget the other. I would be curious to know from that town clerk. The comparison of the two service-wise, so. Okay, good enough. Um. Let's go. Anything else from Bill?
Nothing from.
Okay. Uh, let's see, John Paul Fagnan Health Officer is not present. Committee meeting updates. Um.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Even though, even though Mr. Fagnan is not with us this evening, uh, uh, just. We have some questions that may be answered or not answered in the report. And I don't know who you would ask since he's not here, but I just wanted to point out, and this is just informational. On Wednesday, September twenty-second, in the Rutland Herald. There was an article. About COVID and masks. And the governor. And the governor was asked and gave the response, has said no. In response to calls from legislators, school officials and others. For a reimposition of restrictions, including a mask mandate in light of the increased virus activity. That's because he said a state of emergency order would need to be in place to impose such a mandate. And members of his administration have not recommended such a step. He goes on, and I, I quote his quote, the governor. "We're not in the same place we were six months ago," he said, "and neither are Vermonters who have been reevaluating their risks because of the vaccine." "And we simply can't be in a perpetual state of emergency." "It sets a dangerous precedent and would be an abuse of my authority." And I think in light of the governor's own statement. Having had. The advantage of medical professionals such as Dr. Levine and others. Making this statement that we would, I would personally recommend that our town health officer. Reevaluate his position in light of this, uh, statement from the governor. That it would be an abuse of the governor's authority to order a mask mandate and respectfully request that he reevaluate this. And I had, I had other questions on that sheet. Uh, I'll leave it up to you, Madam Chair. We want to deal with that at a, in the next item on the agenda. And thank you for allowing me to read this.
Okay, thank you. The governor did have a press conference again today. I don't know if you listened to it.
No, I did not.
Yeah. Um, the issue about masks came up again, um. Pretty much the same as what you read, so.
I just think we're being much, much overprotective and.
On the other hand, I was up in Maine and people were masked all over the place and many of the establishments had signs on the door.
Yeah.
So.
I just, I just don't see, I don't, I don't see individuals taking a stand that they're either more important, more informed. Or more medically proficient than doctors at the state level and the governor of our own state. I don't, I just don't, I can't understand that. It's gotta be an act of hubris rather than scientific evaluation. Otherwise, the governor wouldn't say what he said. But that's just how I view it.
Well, I think that if you and JP, um, have a discussion about it next meeting, that would be the appropriate thing for.
Well, I will certainly try.
Alrighty.
To have that reasonable discussion.
Right. And of course, every two weeks, the situation changes, so. Um. Committee meeting updates. We do have a report from the personnel and highway committees. Um, and, but, let's see, it was. Okay, Joe DiNardo was, was present. He is on the call. JP was there, as was Sharon Russell. Neither of those two are on. Joe, do you want to bring this up tonight or do you want to defer it till the next meeting?
Well, um, what I'd like, you know, the, the, the gist of the highway portion of this is the, uh, getting as much information. Down from Byron, um, he has provided a ton of stuff already and in making sure that however. We, uh, proceed with his successor, that the stuff that's been done in the past is, uh, verified. Um, documented and available for that. Um, I'm not sure if we have. A clear-cut direction yet for, you know, we did, uh, try to get, reach out to Kevin and, you know, through you and. And get this, uh, um, started because. We're running out of time to have Byron on the clock and be able to, um, help us. Get a new person up to speed. So I'm, I'm not sure how, what the best situation is. Um, you know, we had talked for over the last year or more about moving that position in-house and, um. And the board would, would interview and, um, hire someone. Um, you know. Folks like Byron don't come along every day. Um, and when you go out. To, um, the election process and you win an election by popular vote, doesn't necessarily mean. You know what to do in this. This is a very unique job. Um, select board members. You can kind of learn on the job, some of the others, but the high, the road commissioner's job is, you, you gotta come with a background. And unfortunately, when folks run for this position, um, it's hard to know their background or whatever. And that was one of the reasons, uh, the town has moved away from individuals that work for themselves. That have a good knowledge of highway construction, road construction and, and some of that stuff and. You know, that was why I've been kind of leaning toward the, uh, the highway position being a hired position, but. There's some complicating factors with voting and appointments. Um, you know, you appoint somebody to that position when Byron's done. And they're there for fifteen months or so and, or if we elect it. So I think this is going to really require some, some, uh. Serious thought. And, and I think as a board, we, we should schedule a, you know, a meeting. Specific just to talk about this topic, and we need to do it sooner rather than later because, because we have to make some decisions and it would be. Really nice to have a plan and somebody on board, you know, like really soon. So, um, that, that would be, that was kind of the gist of what that whole, uh, highway committee meeting was about is, uh. We, we need to move forward on this and, and move quickly and hopefully correctly.
Um, you did get, um, Kevin Brown's memo that came, I mean, it came this afternoon, so we didn't have a lot of time to digest it, so just.
I, I was in the hayfield all day today, Mary, and I have not read it or, or had a chance to look at it. Um. So, you know, I think all the board members will have it, but, but you understand my thoughts on a, on a, I'd like this not to be part of a regular meeting. I think we need a specific meeting, um, and, and try to come to a consensus. Rather quickly and, and then move forward on it with, with Kevin's guidance and, and what is. What is going to be best for the town? Um, you know, I'm, I'm, uh, this, this is a, this is a tough, tough decision right now.
Okay.
I, uh. It might not come as a surprise to anyone. Like, I kind of disagree with Joe and, uh. He makes some valid points, but, uh, and, and I do agree with him that we should have a separate meeting. That's what I was going to propose tonight. And I wondered, I actually, in, in reading about all this succession stuff and. Retirements and elective versus appointed positions, I just wonder where. All of this discussion really originated because. I've lived in this town since nineteen seventy. I've seen the succession. I've seen the succession, as, as you call it, Mary. I don't call it succession. I just call it the elective process. And I've seen the elective process work. So well in the town of Rutland. That I would question why we would want to change it. And I understand what Joe is saying about. Well, it's become complicated and you need this and you need that. Everything gets more complicated as you go along. But there's something to be said for not. Consolidating power. In a board that changes potentially every single year. Because this board does with the, with the elective process potentially change every single year. As opposed to leaving. The control of that position in the hands of those that are served, which is the electorate. And I'm just. Uh, I tend to be philosophically opposed, generally speaking. To taking power away from the people, investing it in. Uh, uh, a temporary board. I, I just. I'm just against that.
Alright.
For, for, for that, for those reasons, so.
So, but, but I do hear you and Joe agreeing that we should do this at a separate meeting.
I, I agree that we should do it at a very transparent meeting so that the townspeople know what we're saying.
Why we have open meetings.
Yeah.
Okay.
But what, it should be a separate meeting.
Okay, so I'm looking at my calendar. And we have October eighteenth, which is just a week away. And then we have a select word meeting on the twenty sixth and then we have. Tuesday, November second. Um, which would be the in-between, so. Or, you know, obviously we could do it any other day of the week, but then we're going to run into other. Other conflicts. Um. Is next week, Tuesday, the nineteenth too soon?
I don't think so.
Don?
Well, I don't know. It depends on what the agenda is. I mean, if we're just gonna, if we're gonna have a meeting and we just throw it around, that's one thing. We can do that anytime, but. Uh, you know, I, I would think we would have. I don't know what the agenda would be for the meeting. I mean, wha- what is it that we need to decide?
We.
First of all.
From what I understand of the Personnel and Highway Committee recommendation. The committee will recommend to the full board advertising for an acting road commissioner. And then the committees would like to explore having the position, I'm reading from the minutes.
Mm-hmm.
I wasn't here for that. Would like to explore having the position be appointed. That's explore having the position be appointed rather than elected. And we'll discuss the process with the town council and we have some recommend on that. And then we would also need to discuss the remainder of the term, and that's a legal opinion at some point from town council. And then, um. You know, the, this, the committee agreed that they would like to have someone in position in the next thirty days. So I would say that the purpose of the meeting, if we do it on the nineteenth or any other time, would be to discuss. Um, the soon to be vacant road commissioner position and what we do about it.
Mary, if I understand right, if we appoint someone to that position. They do not have to be a town resident. Is that right?
That is my understanding.
So you appoint somebody there and they would, you know, we would, we would interview folks, look for background. Look for qualifications and then that person would be appointed. You know, you can't just pick somebody out of the thin air. Um. That person would then serve out the remainder of the term. Which, or would they serve, see, the, the question was, would they serve out?
I know, that's why, that's why we have to get that answered.
Right, because if they, if they serve out the remainder of the term. You're talking approximately fourteen months of employment, fifteen if they come on board. Or maybe sixteen if we could get them hired by mid-November. The, that, that would be okay. If you are looking at someone to come on board just till March. I think it's going to be more difficult to find, um, qualified applicant that would want to do that. Um, and that's why the discussion about hiring versus elected kind of comes into play because if you were to. Put somebody on there that would serve until March, when the decision would be before the bo- voters. Whether or not they want to. Allow the select board to hire someone versus, uh, the community electing someone, then that, that kind of. Makes a clearer choice as to what we're doing. So there's, this is a discussion that I think that needs to be before the entire board. As to the best direction and the majority of the board will determine what direction we go and and get it moving. And and I think that's. What we need to discuss. Hopefully between now and next week, we may get some more of these legal. Concerns and statutory things taken care of, but we just need to get, uh, projected. Direction and and how it's going to work for us and then and then move on to that. Because if we appoint somebody.
Again, we're not trying to debate the whole thing tonight.
We don't want to debate the whole thing, but I think he made, I think Joe's made.
Yeah.
I do, I believe, and I, and I, I'd like to be corrected if I'm wrong and and I, I'm sure Kevin will. I believe he's made an incorrect assumption. And the incorrect assumption is that we have. We have two choices. We can appoint, we can appoint someone. Uh, to serve until March, or we can appoint someone to serve the unexpired term.
Well, I'm not sure that.
If we, well, if we appoint someone to serve the unexpired term. That. That very term, term means a political office, and I believe that that, that would have to be a town resident.
Which is why we can, if you're available next week at six o'clock on Tuesday, the nineteenth, and Joe's available. Next week.
Hopefully the rest of the board.
And the rest of the board is. Um, I'm available. I've already put it in my calendar. So why don't we have this special select board meeting to discuss the road commissioner position? Um. Elected versus appointed and all of these other nuances that go with it.
So that will be a committee of the whole meeting?
Yeah, well, it will be, it'll be a special select board meeting and we'll all be here, okay? We won't need a committee necessarily because we're all going to be. Here. Okay. So we'll check with the other two and hopefully they will be available or can call in.
And I just wanted to confirm, Mary, I think you alluded to it at the beginning of the meeting.
Hmm.
That, that based on the, uh. Based on the recommendation of the highway committee, you contacted Kevin Brown. To get the opinions that.
I had contacted Kevin Brown some time ago.
But it wasn't, it wasn't the highway committee that contacted.
No, I was wanting to talk to him.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Yeah. Cause we, you know, anyway. Okay, so special select board meeting next week, Tuesday. And that takes care of Personnel and Highway.
Well, it didn't take care of personnel. We didn't talk about that.
Well.
There's no one there. There's no one on there tonight. I believe it's JP and Sharon.
It is, so they're not here.
Um. They're not here, so it would be hard to, to get a report. From absent members, but.
So I will, let's, um. Put that. We'll, we'll do the Personnel Committee, not at. Next week's meeting, but our next regular select word meeting, okay?
Which will be the twenty sixth.
That sounds correct. All right. And the same time, the Police Committee meeting, because we need to take a proposal. Okay.
I'll, I'll hunt Ted down.
Okay, update on project list, um. We've talked actually a little today about the Pocket Park, about town hall building improvements, um, the drain spouts, I'm thinking.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we did a new water and sewer allocation. Uh, transfer station toilet, don't have anything on that pedestrian quarter. Northwood Park Trail System, nothing new, Railroad Lawsuit, nothing new. Water and Sewer Inventory, I think that's done. That probably can come off. Uh, shared use path. Um, nothing on that slip lane. We haven't done that in a long time. We'll look for some guidance someday from Highway. Delapidated buildings, succession planning, we just discussed, uh, JP's sidewalk is in the works.
Yeah.
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 Rooftop solar arrays, we haven't talked about for a while. Center Rutland Fire Station lawsuit, we're just waiting to hear. On potential mediation and the new public safety building. I think you've been in touch with the two chiefs. Deputies and Assistant Chiefs.
We, we are trying to coordinate a mutually acceptable date.
Yeah, oof, okay. Good luck with that.
Difficult as I can be.
Yeah, I know, I know. Okay, so that's the update on the project list. Under new business.
What is the?
Can I?
What is that? Uh, under building and technology, what is the bullet establish a set of social media posting rules?
Uh, there, there's. Ta- there's towns that have, uh, VLCT has some model policy on. Uh, how to handle social media accounts, just so that everybody's like, knows what we. Everybody kind of on the inside knows what's, what we post and and how we, how we kind of manage it and we've been. We, we have a lot of people that follow our, our pages, so it's just making sure that everybody's on the same page about what we should be doing and how we should be doing it. Cause it's, it's a very, it's a becoming a very, well, it has been a pretty powerful tool, so.
Well, I realize that.
You done?
Pardon me?
Where, where are you? What are you looking at?
I'm, I'm on the building and technology.
Oh, 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 gotcha, okay.
Just read. Yeah, I, um, I, I agree with you and I just wanted to know if we, do we have an established policy or do? What, what are the guidelines that you use, Bill? I mean, are you directed by the chair as to what to post? Do you decide on your own?
Once in a while I do.
Yes.
Because especially if it's something where we want volunteers, we want public input on something where I, I will ask Bill to post.
Yeah.
To there, but, you know, the nitty gritty, I mean, you do the fire department one. I don't know as we have that much more, so.
Well, like the one today, you, there was one today on scam.
Oh, the, yeah, that when the police do a press release, we post that. That goes on the website and it goes on the, on the Facebook page. I mean, we may get a couple dozen people that see it on the website. We may get, we, we get several hundred, do over a thousand see it on the Facebook page, so.
But you make, you basically make those decisions based on.
Yeah.
Guidelines that you follow.
I try to, you know, like, we, we do things like, um, the household hazardous waste events we post on there. So it's basically things that are like. Relating to the, 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 uh, meeting agendas go up there for select board, you know, to all this stuff that's kind of the, the, for the benefit of the town residents.
I was kind of hoping that you would have put something about Columbus Day when you put the indigenous holiday down there.
That got a lot of comments and I.
Well.
I debated whether, you know, I mean, we can hide comments, but that, that, that's, that's why we really need that because I'm like, you know. It, it's, if people are going to have their opinion, then it's fine. Like, it's. But I, it seemed, it seemed like in the post, we were getting accused of changing the holiday. I'm like, well. We didn't really do that, but, you know.
Yeah, whatever.
Do you have, um. A model policy you'd like to circulate among the boards?
VLCT has one.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, why don't you? Maybe stick it in our next packet?
Yeah.
Thanks, thanks, Bill.
All right, down under new business, board to review for approval, the sewer allocation and water connection request.
Did that.
That, that's Ranberry Road, board to review contract from COT. We're going to take that up at our next meeting. Board to discuss tabled motion contract with DCF. I'm going to talk with Kevin Brown about whether it is worth it. Board to discuss tabled motion approving Cedar. We did approve that tonight. Any other new business? Have any other new business? Uh. Don't think so. All right. Don, do you have any other new business?
No.
Joe, do you have any other new business?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Um, old business succession planning. We did some of that storage of department records. I think that's an ongoing discussion, trying to get some of them in here. Uh, Diamond Run Mall property, just a reminder that that will be at our next regular select board meeting because we're going to end. Very possibly, at least in part, will be an executive session if we get into the details of the security system. Any other old business? Joe, you got any other old business?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Don, anything else?
No, motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Motion is made to adjourn. Was that a second?
That was.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
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 Aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.